Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this special meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, June 1st at 4:30 PM. For those of you joining us in council chambers this afternoon for the very first time, you'll find the agenda and the supporting documentation in the little plastic bins on the wall by the door where you came in. Help yourself to that information. We would ask that you please turn off cell phones and pagers so we can get through this session as quickly as possible, and everybody has an opportunity to speak. We will be limiting each presentation to five minutes. And we are being broadcast live on Channel 28. And this session will be rebroadcast again on Friday morning at noon, or Friday at noon. So with that, would you, oh, may we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Chilton.
Here.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Mayor Sosserman.
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes or corrections to this afternoon's agenda?
No.
Do they have a motion?
Move to adopt agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, not in that motion carries. Thank you. Item five is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter that's not on this agenda this evening? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public comment and move on to item six, nonprofit grant funding applicant presentations for this fiscal year.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm going to recuse myself from these discussions because I am a sitting member of the Yountville Arts Committee, which is one of the applicants, and I don't want there to be any perceived conflict of interest on that or any of the other applications. So I'll step down during your deliberations.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, Vice Mayor Dunbar is stepping down and leaving the dais in the chamber. First up, applicant AMVETS. If you'd like to step up to the microphone and state your name.
My name is George Choi, and this is Orlando Rizendes of the AMVETS, and we're under the auspices of the AMVETS here. And our mission is to augment the welfare and security of Yountville citizens with an alternate communication network in times of emergency or disaster. Typically, police, fire, hospital, and Red Cross have no direct line of communication. So in the event of disaster, the incident commander will assign a ham shadow to each agency and field unit for backup communications. The incident command system was developed by the fire department and is now the organizational model for disaster management. Hams are practiced in the protocol of net control. In the Bay Area, weekly roll calls are conducted by the police net control to assess readiness of hams. This grant would facilitate the setting up of a backup security network for the citizens of Yountville. To achieve this mission, we are conducting classes every Thursday at 5:30 PM in the main dining room. Everyone is welcome to attend. Hams receive no compensation for their services. Arlenda, would you like to say what?
Well, this morning, George Choi made me aware of this. What he's trying to do is set up training to learn how to use a ham radio. Now, George Choi is a licensed ham radio operator. He's willing to teach anybody at the veterans' home or in the community how to do this, and he feels it's a necessary part of the town for safety purposes. That's, okay, George, it's all yours.
All right.
That's all I get.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for AMVETS regarding this matter? I have one question. Mr. Choi, you say there are currently six licensed ham operators in Yountville?
At the home, yes. There's one in Yountville, Mr. Lewis. He's not active at the moment.
Okay, and there are five at the home right now, then? Okay, and you believe the program would be effective if we had 12?
Well, we could operate now with the personnel, but the more, the better. To, for instance, in an actual disaster, we would want to send out shadows at the different stations, the different hospitals, police, fire, Red Cross.
Okay.
So we need additional help, actually, to do a good job.
Okay, good, thank you. Any more questions for AMVETS? Okay. Number two is the Yountville Arts Committee.
Judith Caldwell, 6880 Jefferson Street, Chairwoman of Yountville Arts Committee. The Town Council approved the establishment of the gallery at the Community Center Program earlier this year. We're grateful for that, as you know. This program is designed to provide community residents with access to enjoy a changing range of artwork from local Yountville residents and affiliated artists. The Arts Committee of the Parks and Recs Community Services Commission curates four shows per year with staff support, and the support from staff has been excellent and positive, and from the Town Manager's Office, which has been just and fair and wise, and the Parks and Recs staff, which have already contributed so much to us. The Arts Committee sponsors four artist reception shows, one for each of the four shows that I mentioned, and these receptions allow the community to meet and to personally interact with artists and each other. Some of the reception events include musical performances as well to add to the cultural enrichment-enhancing experience. Funding is requested by the Yountville Arts Committee in order to support artist awareness of each show that we have, the artist gallery show, installation supplies, promotional materials, artist reception costs such as food, equipment rental if needed, and other incidental expenses, small stipends for musicians, for example. So the requested funding would provide $300 in support to each of the four shows and artist receptions. So we're asking $300 for four shows. That makes $1,200. The Arts Committee will continue to solicit financial support beyond the financial support that we are requesting from the town for this program today. And that's it. And as you know, Thursday night is our next reception, 6 to 8 PM. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Does council have any questions? Thank you for that.
Well, I did. What time did you say that was, on Thursday night?
Let me give you a flyer, Mr. Dutton.
Oh, no, I just, I thought you said 8:00 PM.
6 to 8.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Since I'm working, I didn't want to be too late.
Next up is Yountville Child Development Program.
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you. I'm Darlene Howell. I am the Program Coordinator, Early Childhood Services with the Napa County Office of Education. And this is Edna Williams. We operate the Children, Yountville Children's Center at Yountville Elementary School, and Edna is the lead teacher and state supervisor. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about how our programs are funded and who we serve, and then I'm going to hand this over to Edna to explain the details of her application request. We serve a total of 50 families between our two programs. We have an all-day preschool program that serves three- and four-year-olds, and a before and after-school and during summer school-age childcare program. These programs are funded through the State Department of Education to serve low-income working families. So these are families who make 60% or less of the state median income and work or go to school. These families receive their childcare services either with no cost or very low sliding-scale co-payments. These programs are traditionally funded really low. We barely make, cover consumables. Typically, the State Department of Education gives out grant funding for extra things, for facility grant loans and surplus materials. As you can imagine, we haven't seen any of those grants in the last year or two, so we are especially excited this year to be able to have the opportunity to apply for a few extras with you. So with that, I'll let Edna explain what she's asking.
The material and supplies that we applied for the grant will help support our program for quality improvements, the sandbox, the SAN for the sandbox, the fire engine trike, the balance beam, which would be coordinating the children, we have special needs children in our program. And then we are requesting a deluxe learning center. This would be an individual type. There's four earphones, and they'll learn independent listening skills, and it's during free choice time. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yountville Elementary School.
My name is Troy Knox. I'm the principal at Yountville Elementary School. And first of all, thank you for considering our grant applications this evening. As you know, education is being gutted by this, at the state level, and Yountville Elementary is no exception. Fortunately, we have some wonderful support in the community to help fund all the fabulous programs to help us maintain our high-achieving status as an elementary school. I am requesting, on behalf of the school, a grant in the amount of $9,000, which would cover all of our funding for the school year in terms of supplies, art supplies, PE equipment, music enrichment, and technology equipment. Now, we do have a wonderfully supportive PTA. However, majority of their funding is now going towards having a library clerk, a computer, a lab assistant. This year, they funded a PE and music enrichment teacher. And so as you can see, their budget is being cut as a result to fund these necessary positions. And the funding that we receive from the school district for site funds is, equates to roughly $9.50 a student. Now, I know that the $9,000 is a large figure, but when you break it down per student, it's roughly $52 a student. And we feel that our children are worth it, frankly. They are our future. We put our heart and soul into our children, and we feel that it's, we should do nothing less than then to give our children what they deserve. And that's an outstanding, highly engaging, student-centered curriculum. That is my request, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Knox? Councilmember Dutton?
Troy, just curious, you mentioned site fund. Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure, sure. Basically, the money is funneled down from the state level, down to the district level, down to the site level. And because we're a smaller school, we, while we still receive the same number of dollars per student, having fewer students, we receive less per student. So, excuse me, we receive less as a whole, as a site. So that does not take us very far with some of the activities and programs which we like to offer. So that's how the $9.50 comes into play.
Thank you.
Troy, I'm sorry, what was the PTA funding?
The PTA is currently funding our library clerk, and that person also serves as our computer lab aide, and that's roughly $26,000. And then we also, this year, happened to fund our music and PE enrichment teacher, and that was roughly $7,000, so.
Good. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yountville Baseball Little League.
Madam Mayor, members of the Town Council staff, my name is Rick Tuckerman. I'm the president of Yountville Baseball. I've been president for the last couple of years, so it's nice to see you again, and thank you for offering to us and others a benefit grant. As you know, last year, the town was gracious enough to grant us a $2,000 grant for our pitch count machine, which we purchased, and it'll be installed after the end of the season, which is next year. So we're excited to do that. We have, by the way, this year, a tremendous minors team, 16-0, so we're excited to actually express that at any point that we can. Last year, 1-15. This year, 16-0.
Turn around.
And we're going to say, of course, that has to do with your great generosity in the grants that you provide us. This year, we're asking for a grant of quite a small amount compared to last $549. It's to help support our temporary restroom facilities, which are a recurring cost each year. As we noted in our letter to the Town Council, this has been a particularly challenging year. We think it's, as well, because of the budget. We've seen a significant reduction in the number of kids, down from 70 to about 45 this year. We hope that has some, something to do with a little bit of a trough in a certain age kid at the, group of kids at the older age in order to carry a majors team. We didn't have enough to carry a majors team, but we don't believe that'll be the case in the future. So it's our request for a $549 grant for the restroom facilities. We do also include in our letter a proposal to screen those. We haven't done a very good job in the past by putting that facility up at the front of the sidewalk, so we'd like to find a location that's back, towards the back of the parking lot, a flat spot that we can also enclose with some kind of lattice work. So that concludes our report. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer you.
Thank you. Rick, have you, have you checked with the suppliers of these facilities and asked them if they might be interested in sponsoring Yountville Little League?
We have. You know, each year, we do ask for donations. This has been a particularly unusual year for a variety of different reasons. Not only have the kids, we've seen a reduction in the number of kids in participation, but a reduction in the number of parents and sponsors. This is the first year in, I don't know how many, perhaps ever, that we haven't actually had a fundraising event. So we have a lot of parents who want to help, but can't really help to the point that it becomes sometimes entirely helpful. So this, this particular year's been difficult. Next, we're hoping to ramp that up by looking for more sponsorship on the part of even the port body producer.
Good. Any questions?
Rick, you made a mention of dip in players. Is that on the older side, not the younger kids? Is that right?
Surprisingly, the older side, yes, the 11-, 12-year-olds. We had carried last year two, two T-ball teams who have transitioned now into two super-rookie teams, so eventually they'll make their way, hopefully through minors onto our majors ball. But this year, we had just eight players, not enough to carry a team, so we sent a couple up to St. Helena that rest either decided not to play or found other opportunities in Napa. But all the kids that do play in our league, of course, have attended, yes, or are obviously members of the community.
That's good for the future, then.
Thanks.
I had a question, Rick. This, this situation came up at opening day. We were talking to a number of people about the restroom, and a lot of them recall that, you know, when they built that multipurpose room and had the restrooms, people said, "I thought there was an understanding that the Little League would be able to use that for their games," and then it never happened. So I don't know, was that just pie-in-the-sky thinking, or?
Well, it's-
I swear to God, there was something that was more permanent than just maybe.
There's, it's a question that I'd almost have to defer to Troy or the school district.
Yeah.
We have had those conversations, not just, of course, the multipurpose room, because the restrooms are just outside of, there are other restroom facilities on, on the property, but we have had those conversations the last couple of years. And we've also, as you probably have heard, been interested in actually constructing our own permanent restroom facilities, but we just completed that capital effort with concession stands, so we have to slowly get into the next one before we really can, you know, gear up and make that happen.
So is it a school district decision or a local school decision on the restroom?
Well, the restroom, it's a combination of both.
Okay.
Yeah, the district itself would have to make that call, as they did with the concession stands, but in terms of actual use on a year-to-year basis, I think that should be primarily a local decision.
Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Napa Valley Museum.
Hello there, I'm Pat Alexander from the Napa Valley Museum. My home address is 6527 Heather Street, right here in Yountville. I want to begin by saying thank you for everything that you've done as a city council and as a, the town staff. It means a lot to all of us. What I'm going to be talking about today is a little bit about our Historic Trunk Program. It is a 27-year history program where we offer history, science, and art education to the K through 12 school district. So I have a very small handout here I'm just going to show you. We actually have 11 different history trunks that we bring out free of charge to anyone and everyone from school districts, all the way to senior programs, to after-school programs, Boys and Girls Club, you name it. We primarily, while we're open to the Napa Unified School District, the town of Yountville, as Troy and others will attest to, we are our home school. This is the, the school district, or excuse me, the school that we present mostly to, not mostly to, but they take full advantage of the resources at the museum. We like to be known as Yountville's museum, and we're trying to build these relationships. But before I go any further, if I could please introduce Tina Blakeney. She is our new executive director, who's sitting here. So I dragged her along for this presentation, sorry, Tina. So we're asking for $5,000, and the reason why is, is that in these times of cutback, when everyone is losing a lot of their funding, we're saying, "Don't worry about it, teachers, we're here for you." So we've stepped up by over 450 presentations this school year. Our next one ends next Wednesday, which is the day before that school ends, because we've added science curriculum to part of our history teaching. As you well may know, last year, in 2009, there are no more science programs for the K through 5 school district. We used to have a traveling itinerary science program that was canceled by the district, and right now, we're stepping up for that science curriculum. It is a free-of-charge program. We really hope that you will help us in our commitment to the teachers. That's one of our programs. The other programs we offer are to the senior, Yountville Recreation Senior Club. We work very closely with Jennifer Carlo, with Carol Rasmussen, and we provide lectures for any of the programs that they want. We come to the after-school program. If there is a per-fee program, it's for the cost, for example, the cost of a kite or the cost of a geod, which is approximately a dollar to $1.50. So those prices are strictly what we pay for it. So you would be partnering with us as we do those programs. Also have a fantastic summer camp program. It is offered, well, primarily, again, the town of Yountville. After-school program uses it, as well as the county. Last year, we partnered with the Unified District/County Program. We offer two and a half hours of incredible museum experiences once a week. So we actually hold summer camp Monday through Thursday from 9 to 12 for any pre-existing summer camp who wants an exciting museum component to their program. We specialize in local history. As you know, the Yountville book was written by myself and the Napa Valley Museum. We're available for lectures, we're available for public speaking. For those members who belong to the museum, of course, it's free of charge for all of the programs that we have. However, we offer free Mondays, every single Monday. Anyone from the entire Napa Valley can come to the museum. We also have three days a year where Yountville residents come in for free. So if those people who are really interested in supporting the museum can't afford the membership, we gladly waive it, or we gladly take volunteers. So this is also a wonderful volunteer opportunity for anyone who wants to, to learn more about history and get involved with a true Yountville museum. And then finally, education. It is the hallmark of our program. So we offer education programs not only to little ones, not only to after-school programs, but the entire public. You're helping us to educate people, and as you well know, it's, to offer someone the key to learning more, to open up their minds, is, is a gift that, that's priceless, so we really hope that you'll consider it. Now, what I'm going to do is leave a couple of replica arrowheads that we have. We give to children all the time, children of all ages. And what it is, is that when you hold something like a replica, this happens to be an obsidian arrowhead, replica, of course, allows people of all ages to hold history and to grow with learning about their world. So these are a little souvenir for you. Remember, anyone who comes up to the museum gets these for free. All you have to do is ask for it, so work on and down to you. We also have Yountville Days Parade and Festival. We are a partnership with the Veterans Home of California. We put on a great Spirit of '45. It was fantastic. And now, next week, we're meeting with the Exploratorium to think about a hands-on exhibit pertaining specifically for science. So you're helping the entire community to grow by assisting us. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Does council have any questions? I have one question. Do you charge a fee to your summer camp program?
We do. We charge a $4.50 fee per child, but that doesn't include the time, I actually trained the summer camp staff here. We come down, we teach the student counselors, we, we work with Carol and all of her staff on how it is that new games happen, how it is that we, we allow children to grow with a little bit of, with guidance here and there. I've been offering that free of charge for, you know, the past six years, but that is a for-fee. The summer camp itself is for-fee, but none of the other lectures, none of the after-school programs, and none of the training that I do when I come and work with our incredible after-school program.
Thanks. Any more questions? Thanks, Pat.
Thank you so much.
Napa Valley Symphony.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members, staff. I'm Richard Aldag, Executive Director of the Napa Valley Symphony. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come make a presentation to this afternoon or evening, whatever it is at this point. The Napa Valley Symphony will be presenting seven concerts at Lincoln Theater in Napa Valley in the coming year, and we are looking for general support from, from the town of Yountville to help us to bring a series of world-class artists and great music to the community. As you may know, the Lincoln Theater was renovated in 2005 to be the permanent home of the Napa Valley Symphony. Napa Valley Symphony, since that time, has been the anchor, anchor tenant at the theater. Napa Valley Symphony since that time has been the anchor tenant at the theater. Next year, we would estimate that we'll be serving at least 6,000 audience members, a great many of them who are residents of the town of Yountville. For every performance we do at the theater, we give 120 tickets to the residents at the California Veterans Home. And just earlier this year, we started a new program, which is rush tickets for Yountville residents, a half hour before the performance, $15 a person will be continuing that. So that residents in the town of Yountville that may not be able to pay the full freight for the ticket price can come right before the concert and get good seats for a very, very reasonable fee. We have, over the years, been in partnership with the town of Yountville on what we call the dine and ride program, and that will be continuing. Prior to and after-hour concerts, Yountville restaurants have special value meals for our attendees, and we know that it's been very, very successful for the restaurants, and that they report back to us that when the symphony is there at the Lincoln Theater, that their business goes up. And in fact, Bob Hurley has specifically commented on the effect that performances at the Lincoln Theater bring to his restaurant and to the other restaurants in the downtown area. We're very, very pleased with the program as it's developed, and we hope that we'll be able to continue to have the service of the Yountville Trolley to provide transportation from downtown Napa up to the theater when the symphony performs. We are very, very proud to be in this community, and as I've said every time I've been here, it is so unusual for a community this size to actually sustain a professional symphony orchestra. And the Napa Valley Symphony will be in its 78th season next year, and it's with great pride that we're here in this community. As you may know, this year was Asher O'Boyes last year as our music director, and we will have seven world-class guest conductors coming next season, and we're very, very much looking forward to, well, we're sad that Asher is no longer going to be with us. We're very, very happy to have the quality of musician that will be coming here, and we're hoping that we can continue to bring the great music that we've been able to bring to the community for many, many years. Also, we are starting two new programs this year, which will be A Messiah, which will be done with the Napa Valley Corral and the St. Helena Chamber Singers. This is a very new part of our program. We will also be doing an Opera Highlights Program with members of the San Francisco Opera Adler Fellow Program. So we'll be adding some operatic performances and choral performances to our performances, to our schedule. And last but not least, it looks like we are going to be providing live music now for the Nutcracker at the Lincoln Theater. So there'll be three shows of Nutcracker presented by Napa Regional Dance Company, and members of the Napa Valley Symphony are going to be performing live. So we'll be able to raise the quality of that Nutcracker by having live music rather than canned music, and we're very, very happy to be able to do that. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Council, how many questions? Thank you, Richard. Friends of the Lincoln Theater?
Oh, was that for an entrance? I'm Richard Aldag, I'm the Executive Director of Lincoln Theater, Napa Valley. Again, it's a great pleasure to be here. I already mentioned to you how happy we are to be in this community. Lincoln Theater, if I can quote Bob Hurley, plays a great role in sustaining the restaurants in downtown Yountville, at least on days when there are performances. I have had the pleasure of being the Executive Director of the Lincoln Theater now for the past year, and it's been a wonderful experience. I'm very happy with the variety of shows and the quality of the shows that we've been able to bring. New for us this year will be our first Broadway production, and I mean the first one that we are, Broadway-style production that we are producing in-house. We will be doing Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. We'll have a workshop for children leading up to that, and then we'll have three performances of Joseph with professional actors in the lead roles, and this is, it will be directed by Matthew Teague Miller of Justin Sienna High School on June 25th, 26th, 27th. So that's something new that we're adding. We'll be hosting Festival de Soleil again this year, bringing a whole new group of people into Yountville. Festival de Soleil gets a lot of people coming from outside of the area to its concerts, and we're very happy to have the festival as, well, we're happy for the partnership we have with the festival every summer. Then, beginning in the fall, we'll have a wonderful array of artists. We're going to have Charo here doing a flamenco show. We'll have the only performance in the Bay Area by Michael Bolton on September 28th. We're going to have Kenny Rogers' Oak Ridge Boys Christmas Show. So we have a full array of great talent that's going to be coming in. The Lincoln Theater, like Napa Valley Symphony, gives 120 tickets to the residents of the California Veterans Home for every show that's produced here. One of the things that we take great pride in is the series of family shows that we present. We have a partnership with California Theater Company that's based down in the South Bay, and they bring us age-appropriate theater programming for children, say, ages three through seven. And we provide this at a very reasonable fee to families, it's $10 a ticket. Plus, this year, we're going to be continuing our relationship with Peter Gross of Mutual of Omaha Wild Kingdom. Peter will be bringing a whole slew of animals this year, and when we brought him there last year, it was just so amazing to see the faces on the kids, especially when the owl that was supposed to fly to someone in the back of the room went up to one of the boxes up ahead and needed to be persuaded to come down. It was really a very, very funny thing to have happen at the theater. We're used to being in control of what we do. Unfortunately, when dealing with live animals, it's sometimes difficult. So we are very happy to serve the community and to help to bring people here to participate in the businesses here in the community. And do you have any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Tug McGraw Foundation.
My name is Wendy Dietz, and I am the Development Director for the Tug McGraw Foundation. I'd like to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to introduce ourselves to Yountville and an opportunity to see how we can support you as our organization. I brought some binders here that I will leave with you, but I thought maybe it would be good if I, as the newcomer, to give you a little bit of background on the Tug McGraw Foundation and then briefly discuss our programs or what we have storing for Yountville. The Tug McGraw Foundation was started in 2003. Tug McGraw was a professional baseball player who played for the Philadelphia Phillies and the New York Mets, took both to a World Series. And Tug was diagnosed with brain cancer and ultimately passed away in 2004. He was being treated at Duke University, and while he was still living, Tug and his son, who is a Grammy Award-winning country artist, Tim McGraw, and caregiver Jennifer Bruce are founded the organization. At that time, they were entrenched with Duke University, and they started a five-year mission for fundraising for a number of projects through Duke University. The programs were based around quality of life for neurological disorders, specifically brain cancer at the time. At Duke University, we raised approximately a million dollars for the Tug McGraw Research Center. We funded a number of scholarships for medical students and athletes. So it was anyone, any college athlete who wanted to do pre-med, we did a number of scholarships there. And we also hosted a Quality of Life Summit, which helped to define kind of what it means to increase somebody's quality of life, especially with a terminal disease. We completed that mission in 2009, and today, we have been, I guess, just to back up a little bit, Tug was born in Vallejo and grew up in the valley, so his family is here, and that's our connection to Napa. In 2009, we finished our mission with Duke, and we decided that it was time to focus our fundraising and our programs on the West Coast. A number of things, obviously, Tug's popularity as a baseball player led to a lot of events and support from the East Coast, and we thought that it was time to come out in our own home. At the same time, we started expanding our mission to get involved with other neurological disorders such as post-traumatic stress disorder and trauma brain injury. And last November, we hosted a Country United, which was a two-day summit with military medicine, the Henry Jackson Foundation, and the Tug McGraw Foundation to discuss the bridging of military and civilian medicine. That brought us to the Yountville Veterans Home. We had subleased the building, it's the team rooms, it's across from Borman Field, where Tug also played as a kid growing up. And we are undertaking a renovation of that building, which is no small task. So we actually just moved our offices, we were located in downtown Napa, and about two weeks ago, we got some temporary space from the Veterans Home. So we are permanently up there, and I have to say thank you to Richard Aldag, who is giving us storage space at the Lincoln Theater for a lot of our extra stuff, so until our building is prepared. So I would like to talk to you a little bit about our mission today, as we've expanded it. We are still fundraising for our scholarships at Duke, and we still do a number of our caregiver services, which are all outlined in this book. But we are now here, and we are undertaking the renovation of the team rooms to provide not only our headquarters, but what we are calling our brain complex. We would like to pay tribute to the players that have played in Yountville and Borman Field. We think that there's a great history there that needs to be told. But we also want to provide a space for community, to provide resources for caregivers and families, and we want to provide a community space for, to learn about the brain and brain function and quality of life. Some of our current programs, which we have applied for in this grant, are the Brain Food Garden, which we are undertaking. We are working with the Yountville Parks and Recreation and the Veterans Home. It's about a 1,600-square-foot plot. We have ordered our galvanized tubs, and we are going to make the area handicapped accessible, and it's going to be about a three-month program with a harvest event at the, and we're working on getting the produce that's grown into the café at the Vets Home and also, obviously, with the children. Involved in that program is also an educational component about nutrition and your brain, exercise and brain function, and how, basically, to keep yourself healthy. We also sponsored an eight-week brain boot camp, basically, a brain fitness boot camp. Just last week was the final week. We sponsored eight participants from the Vets Home and community to learn about, basically, dementia and how to prevent the onset. And the final program that we are in the midst of is a walking program that we've started up at the Vets Home, where it's, once a week, we just get people out who are looking to walk, and we have an incentive program built in so that there's some sort of fun and a goal associated with it. So we're working with the trainers from, at their fitness center on that. In the future, what we would like to do with our space, once we have it renovated, is do some brain injury prevention clinics with kids for the baseball, football, you see it in lacrosse, how to keep people's brain healthy, especially with sports. We are also looking to provide another Quality of Life Summit and bring some of the researchers out to Yountville to meet and see our home and look at the programs, especially the programs that are going on up at the Vets Home currently. And we also are going to bring our chairman, Tim McGraw, out for a weekend in November for some fun and games, and some community events where we want to bring in some speakers, and at that time, we do our awards ceremony. It's our annual gala, so I look forward to.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Does Council have any questions?
Okay, I'll leave these books with you.
Thank you. Napa Valley Hospice?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. And actually, I want to say one thing. I was here last year, and I've never seen a council meeting run so efficiently, so, and I'm not trying to butter you up, I just think you guys do a great job. I'm the Bereavement Services Manager at Napa Valley Hospice, and today, we're asking, as we did last year, for $5,000 to help offset our costs related to providing bereavement to residents in Yountville as well as the Vets Home. And by way of statistics, we had last year 80 hospice families that we served, which was 16% of our total census last year. 11% of those were at the Vets Home, and 5% were the town of Yountville. And this year, we're on a pace, as of now, as of March, excuse me, at 18% of our total census thus far. So one of the ways that we provide bereavement services is to our hospice families throughout the year following the death of their loved one. So we make ourselves available through individual counseling, through group counseling, through phone calls that we initiate throughout the year, and phone calls that come in to us seeking our support. We also keep our doors open to the community at large in terms of other types of losses that occur, accidents, heart attacks, suicides, homicides, all types of losses that may occur in any part of the county. And so our bereavement services are also available to county residents across the valley. In addition, we provide intervention during grief crisis, such as when an accident does occur in the county, and we respond and go into towns, schools, organizations, wherever the event has occurred, and help them get over the initial reaction and sort of build a program for them to follow thereafter for those who might need support. Finally, another, I think, important way that we serve the community is that every summer, we offer a family bereavement camp. We call it Courage Camp, and it's a three-day camp over the course of a long weekend where we take families who have had losses out together and provide a really unique bereavement support activity, type of experience that builds a sense of community and a type of healing that we can't quite capture in quite the same way in the other ways that we work. So it's a... So it's a very meaningful experience for the people who attend. So all of these different ways that we provide bereavement services, you know, we've, as a hospice, we have done more, I can say this with great honesty, than most hospices do across the state and the nation. And we also understand how important it is to be doing this. The one thing that I didn't mean to leave out, but I wanted to get to as a place of focus, is we're also in the schools throughout the valley. And here, we serve Yountville Elementary, Redwood, and Vintage as it relates to connections to Yountville. And so we're in several schools every year. This past year, because of various funding, fewer resources, an example, we were unable to move towards Redwood Middle School this year because we just didn't have the resources to do it. And we'd like to see that sort of thing, you know, not happen by way of garnering, you know, different support that we can in different ways. So the $5,000 that we're asking for is an approximate amount that it costs to run one school group during the course of a school year, because we're in the schools throughout the year, about 30 weeks a year when you take out holidays and field trips and things like that, when we can't run a group. And I think maybe the last thing I'd like to share with you as it relates to the students and the kids of all age, you know, we see over and over again that as the children who participate in our groups get the support they need and understand what they're going through and learn ways of coping with what they're going through, and they get to do that over a continuum of a year, or whenever they come into the group to the end of the year. They really are able to get through many of their issues and resolve a great number of things that have impacted them during the course of their loss, which means down the road that they've found a way to weave it into their longer-life story and their longer-life journey, and they can move forward in such a way that they're less impaired or not impaired, where their development is not taking a hit or arrested. And you know what happens is their families benefit from that, their communities benefit from that, and it has a great trickle-down effect, especially for the younger people that we're working with. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Napa Valley Hospice? Thanks a lot.
Thanks so much.
Molly's Angels?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. My name is Fran Rosenberg, and I'm the President of Molly's Angels. And we serve a need in Napa County that most of the little towns do not, are not able to help their people. We take our seniors and the disabled back and forth to their medical appointments, and usually after that, they need to do a little grocery shopping or pick up their medicine. And we take them, we do not charge them, and we wait for them while they're in their appointment. A lot of these people need surgeries, they, like cataract, macular degeneration, they need shots in their eye, a lot of medical treatment that they do not have in Napa. So we take them to Vacaville, to Vallejo, to Santa Rosa, and of course, it's very time-consuming, and we only have two vans, but what we need is gas money because we don't have, we don't receive grants from the wine auction or the state or federal government. We are a membership-based organization, and we ask that the people in Napa, the families in Napa, if they could donate a dollar a month or $12 a year, that's how we get our funds. And of course, now, all the nonprofits are suffering because people don't have extra money. So what we're asking for is help with our gasoline, and if you have any questions, I'll be very happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Counsel, how many questions? No, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Napa Emergency Women's Services, News.
Good evening, Mayor Sosserman, and members of the council. I'm Tracy Lamb, the Executive Director for Napa Emergency Women's Services, and you have been a great support to us for years, and we really do appreciate it, especially during these tough economic times. And I remember being here last year, saying that the economy seemed to be having an effect on the number of clients that we were serving at News, and in particular, the number of clients serving here in the town of Yountville. And fortunately, since that time, the numbers have doubled again, and we had seven women and one child who received services of News who were residents of the town of Yountville. And these services include everything from emergency shelter to getting help with transportation, help with crisis counseling, and moving from that emergency shelter into transitional housing units. It can be emergency food and clothing, it just runs the gamut. And I think in the report that we turned in, we gave you an example of one of the clients and her daughter who were victimized. And I'd hate to give the details here because I'm afraid that it could be identifiable, but just suffice to say that this was a person who was in a really dire situation, who was able to be provided emergency shelter immediately upon reporting it to law enforcement, and that's the kind of work that we're doing at News, and happy to be able to provide an outreach and be able to reach the people who are here who may not have other resources when they're victims of domestic violence. I did want to add that we are having a change coming up in this next fiscal year in that we are taking over the program that was housed in the Volunteer Center, which was the rate crisis program. And so coming up this next fiscal year, beginning July 1st, News will be also serving victims of sexual assault and child molestation, and unfortunately, in all likelihood, will probably be serving more of Yountville's population as a result of that. The services provided by that program also include confidential 24-hour outreach directly to the hospital in case of a sexual assault, emergency crisis counseling, help throughout the criminal justice process, and referrals for counseling and ongoing support. And so with that added service, I know that they'll be more requested of us, and we're excited about the possibility of being able to provide that service. Other than that, I just wanted to see if you have any questions about what we provide, and just let you know again, unfortunately, that the needs are not going away, and I'm afraid that they might continue to increase. Actually, today, I think, was the first day since this time last year that our shelter wasn't completely full. We have been just in a revolving pattern of having people, having to use the services because there are less services available, and also having to use them longer because once they're there, it's more difficult to transition out. And I'm very proud of the services that we're providing and making sure that women do, women and children do have a safe place to go. We also serve men, not at the emergency shelter, but also with, help with restraining orders and other services that we provide.
Good, thank you. Does Counsel have any questions for Tracy? Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Cope Family Center?
Thank you for having me here. I'm Michelle Grippy. I'm the Associate Director at Cope Family Center, and as I was listening to Tracy talk about the needs that have been increasing at News, we work very closely with the organization as well as a number of other organizations, and we've seen the same trend over the past year.